Next, that's twenty-five dash three B, twenty-five dash three N, twenty-five dash twenty-seven C, twenty-five dash twenty-nine, and twenty-five dash thirty-three E one, and adding sections twenty-five dash twenty-two dash twenty-nine A, twenty-five dash thirty-three K, twenty-five dash thirty-three L, and twenty-five dash thirty-four A. Any comments on this ordinance? Move on, we have a better deal. Hearing none, we'll move on to ordinance O dash twenty-three dash two, in order to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, to amend chapter two ninety of zoning ordinance to address code numbering and formatting made necessary by zoning text amendment in ordinance. None, we'll move on to ordinance O dash twenty-three dash three, in order to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the annual budget of the general fund of the town council of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one to June thirty of twenty-twenty-two to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. Any comments? Ordinance O twenty-three dash four, in order to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the annual budget for the utility fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July one to June thirty of twenty-twenty-two to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. Any comments on that order? Ordinance O twenty-three dash five, in order to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, amending the annual budget for the water park fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July one of twenty-twenty-one to June thirty of twenty-twenty-two to reconcile expenses and income and to ratify over expenditures. Any comments on this ordinance? Ordinance O dash twenty-three dash six, in order to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, adopting the annual budget for the mitigation fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July one, twenty-three, to June thirty of twenty-four. Any comments on this ordinance? Ordinance O dash twenty-three dash seven, in order to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, adopting the annual budget for the water reclamation treatment plant fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July one, twenty-three, to June thirty of twenty-four. Any comments on this? Lastly, ordinance O dash twenty-three dash eight, in order to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, adopting the annual budget for the general fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July one, twenty-three, to June thirty of twenty-four, and setting municipal tax rates. Any comments on this order? We're through that portion of the meeting. It's for first of hearing. Any ideas? Folks, we have about ten minutes before we start this meeting. So feel free to do whatever you want in the next seven hours.
I'm not sure. Like the logistics, like how, where would people be? They're all being figured out.
Yeah, well, the only, I mean, the other thing they could do.
I don't know if they've been thinking about it. It's a work in its own right. It just seems like there's a block. There's a lot of issues. We have to deal with it. I don't want to see it. We have to solve the problems. We have to make sure that we are able to. We have to get it. We have to solve it. We have to get it. We have to solve it. We have to get it. We have to solve it. We have to get it. We have to solve it. We have to get it. We have to solve it. We have to get it.
Okay. That's what I'm saying. I'm trying to figure it out.
I just want to see if you guys can explain this. I'm trying to figure it out.
I don't know if you can. I'm trying to figure it out.
I don't know if you can. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. Okay. That's what I'm saying. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out.
I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out.
I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to figure it out.
We are about to begin the more than sixteen, as Calgieridium, uh, the. The Reverend Reed, that's the town councilman mayor here. Time we will stand for the legislature. First, Mr. Mayor, I would use a test of each word, A one. I'd like to ask for a eight, eight percent for two longtime public servants, Jim Parrott and Menchri.
My name is Bruce Stenman. I live at two thirty-sixth, called Club Drive, in Dunkirk. I'm also living in the vicinity of the district, which is forty-one sixteen Year Avenue, along with my sister, Anne Lamb, sitting right next to me. So the town has eighteen million dollars in the bank, and you guys can do whatever you want with it. Which is probably one of their story, plenty of years here tonight for a civil discussion.
If you don't mind, sir, I was going to do what actually I should.
I'm kidding now. Okay. Those people don't even know that. I mean, people raise their hands if they're, you know, they know that much. I don't, it's the general fund budget we're talking about. So this is secret. I'm sure tonight at the mayor's state of the town, they'll be bragging about having gonna be seven years in a row that you lowered property taxes and we get another penny this year. That's for, y'all have millions in the bank and taxpayers did money, did pennies. Come on, you. We gotta be honest. The budget you're introducing tonight about water and sewer, you're raising everyone's water and sewer rate four hundred bucks a year, no matter how much you use. That increase doesn't even have anything to do with water users. So you can't use that excuse this year. Four hundred dollars increase in the town has eighteen million bucks. All we do is get to learn from the general fund for ten years to pay for your capital pools instead of paying for a water that is one year. That way you spread that cost down and your four hundred dollar increase goes away and you're still left with millions in the bank. The other issue that I'd like to talk about, which is on the agenda, is not in town residents not being allowed to be front park. It's a joke. There's twenty-four in front there. Twenty-three, if you include the three of us just for town staff. It sounds exactly like there's gonna be five hundred people at one time at Bayfront Park. I mean, should we not walk down somewhere in case the scum falls on us? Come on. Everyone is why love, fell in love with Chesapeake Beach because they went there when they didn't live here. The memory they're always remembered. So water park budget that's getting introduced tonight, you're reducing the capacity down to four hundred eighty people. It's been a thousand people a day for twenty-eight years. But in order to do that, which is done, you gotta raise the rate for an accounting person to ninety dollars. It's a hundred and twenty dollars to go to Disney World. Come on. Twenty of them killed it. You're doubling, doubling the rate of a town citizen. Prepare one of them, control there, the town staff application, that two hundred grand is insane. Why is the capacity getting lowered? It's not because of safety. Thing's been there twenty-eight years. We all know it. It's those other county school buses, just like you said, Mr. Mayor. You must not resent people here either. I mean, come on, council. You can certainly elect it to do. And it's, uh, what's happening is embarrassing for me. Who's lived here all my life? I worked here all my life. Mr. Mayor, this is not on the agenda. For what you did to that council boy on Tuesday night killing her, you ought to be ashamed of yourself. When you were part of the party, you will, you will sit here on this you take a seat later so far. You haven't been here ten years. I won't talk to you anymore. You paid two billion dollars in the money and you give nothing back to the ten hat feathers. You ought to be ashamed of yourself. Small town tour, having three cops here for a public meeting and you're raising fees of residence, residence, and you have eighteen million bucks in a small town tour, maybe it's bad.
Mayor Roberts, my name is Bob Carpenter. I live at forty-one, four oh two one Plum Point Road in Huntingtown. As a twenty-year resident of Chesapeake Beach and an eight-year member of this council, I ask that before you approve the minutes of your March seventh, two thousand twenty-three work session and prior to approving resolution twenty-three dash one, then a definition of, quote, "them people," unquote, be provided to the public. Specifically, Mr. Mayor, in Councilment towards we raised the issue of economic development impacts to resolution twenty-three dash one, you stated, and I quote, "I'll be the voice of the soft side now. We don't want them people down here." Just who is them people?
Thank you for your comment.
I'm sure I had someone ask me and say they can't hear you too. They're watching live stream.
Okay. Only on that.
Yeah, just come.
You say your name.
Um, good to be here in Councilman, Mary Lannan. Here with my daughter, West Donovan. This is address forty-one sixteen Year Avenue with owners of the Ridenham Resort. In the past, it has been you all who would remind us that although we are business and property owners in the town, we don't live in the town and that we are customers. Tonight, the table is turned. We are here on behalf of our family, our team members, and our guests to make sure that everyone knows that as business owners, we don't have the right to vote on who serves this town, but we do have a voice and it's time that we use our voices. We are during last week's town session, the work session, and talking about the tourism that's brought to this town from the short-term rentals and our guest at the hotel. You stated, and I quote, "on them people down here." The words were bad enough, the tone and the anger made it worse. This statement has shook this town. We can't move forward if yours don't keep taking us, of course. Enough is enough. It's important that we publicly state that you, your comments, and your attitude in no way respect us. And I hope the council members sitting next to you do not support your comments and your sentiments. Your responsibilities as elected officials are to serve this community, which includes the other estimate. Yes.
Please restrict your remarks to items on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am. We don't have a vote, but the contributions we make to this community and the tax dollars that we pay to this town should account for something. Be careful what you wish for. Where would Chesapeake Beach be without the tax dollars from these local businesses? This town was built by the businesses and is primarily funded by the businesses. This town was built as its destination and continues to be one. We are proud to continue the legacy of our parents and are honored to serve our community. We are here to serve the people, all the people. The town of Chesapeake Beach is open for business and we are proud to be a part of the new life Business Alliance, standing strong together as businesses in this community. Thank you.
There you go, hit eighty-one thirty-two Bay Cyber, Chesapeake Beach. That is my business address. Not sure where the road fits in, but I do reside at twenty-twenty Pops Point Road in Hunting Town. I've been resident on and off, and several residents who are at this beach for probably half my life. Same with my father, who had several residents who lived here and died here. Same with my mother until we just put her in a senior location at French Frederick. This twenty-three dash warning resolution. Can't even take my own kids to walk the front park because I don't have a Chesapeake Beach address. Am I correct in saying that? I can have the village meetings for the, and any kind of substance. Twenty business where we're destroying it. It seems to be town council would want that, that entire opinion. I can't ask my mother, walk the beach with me? I'm a little confused of how this all works. I feel that you're talking this totally against business. It's not just walking, making fun of her. It's restricting us from what we can and cannot do with our property. We can't go and serve honey anymore. Any improvements we need, there comes with. We have to adhere to, I guess that's what it's called. Am I correct in saying that? So with that being said, you're seeing everything is being taken. So I just want to. The Chesapeake Business Alliance, I hope you will consider what you're doing and make these decisions. Thank you for your comment.
I bought my house on Summer City in two thousand eighteen. While no the mayor has lived here about the same as growing up here, enjoying the area with kids, being able to access any area whenever I please, creating memories of Brownie Beach with my family that I will cherish. It was three minutes away from Brownie. Old Mayor and possibly enjoyed it together since the last time before the season started and we weren't parked allowed anymore. We looked for shark teeth, jumped in the shell of water and ran around. Not only have I been around the beach area my whole life, but I have worked at Brownie Resort almost ten years. From the out of towners who choose to make their trip down here to enjoy our wonderful town to make residents themselves. Never have I viewed any of the people who walked through our doors as dead told me to be kind because you never know what someone is going through. And to take it away from any group of people in the right.
Girl Henry, four zero one nine, Thirteenth Street, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. Hard to say anything except that your both comments are an embarrassment and everybody should be apologized.
My name is Doris Stanley Stelter. I live at forty fourteen Seventeenth Street, Chesapeake Beach. This is the first time you've made a primary mind. Have to understand the impact that trust conflict has had. You feel very comfortable. Ever have to pay for doing that. Quite frankly, you and I, I thought had a good relationship and you've spent time as as I know for a fact. It was true. You're darling. You're one of the kindest people I've known in my lifetime. Like that. With our facility. One of the
The twenty twenty five.
Would you just step down?
I live at three eight zero two Thirteenth Street. South as it gets, but let me tell you something. You don't speak for me. Thirteenth Street is the last street before you hit Summer City. My neighborhood feels that way about people coming in this town. They've been doing it for the better part of a hundred years now. That's why it's here. It was a resort town to start. We're down now. It's a nice place to come. Dragged down into town. What's there? That beautiful veterans park. Why did we build that? So we can look at it or so everyone can look at it. All that recognition we want to do, all the tree city stuff we do with the green committee. Why do we do that? So we can look at it or so everyone can look at it. It's not here for us. This isn't ours. Some we don't own it. We're here to take care of it. That's what we do. And telling people they don't want to hear or they can't come here doesn't make any sense to me. Now, my livelihood comes from tourism. That's what I do for a living. I cook food. I know that half dozen places I've worked in this town in North Beach alone, that's where the money is tourist season. Every May to every September. It gets warm, people flood the beaches, they walk through shops, they visit restaurants, they buy local goods, they shop local. That's what I want. I don't want people afraid to come here. I don't want people feeling like they can't come here. That's not why we're here. That's not why we make this town beautiful. That's not why we do what we do. We don't own it. We only look after it and we can't look after it if we keep
This manager, I live in nine thousand Fifth Avenue in North Beach. I am proud to be working at the bar at Yale. I manage hotels in Washington, DC. West Four Lurdesale. I live in Chicago. I've always attended town town meetings, but I've never seen a town such as this that is so anti-business. Whether you like to watch Neil or Donna or any other businesses here, doesn't tend you your salary that you like it or not. They may not live here, but they pay taxes here. This meeting, we get to hear what you meant by those people. Is there people that come here pay your salary? Thank you.
My name is Renee Demmer. I live at three nine one five Fourteenth Street in Chesapeake Beach. I have a comment on your comment about the Bayfront Park. It's the fact that town called Chesapeake Beach, the only beach accessible is based they set the only part of beach away from anything that may want to come here. I find that offensive. It's like boardwalk every day, just like you do. How many people can get on that beach? And if you're so worried about it, then take care of it. There's we're on that beach because it's not safe. You have the thing to touch it or in your pockets. Take it now. You want to protect it for just the citizens or to protect it for somebody? Of it. And you not even want to take it for great from the people, those people that come here, those people, everybody they spend at that hotel, this town gets five percent of. So money into your budget.
Three and a half years ago from Baltimore and I've loved it. First day one, it's a little town where my family come to live in, a little town from Baltimore, um, other states. My mom is from Royal Beach. So she said to me, that's your peachy town. This is the beach that you wanted. I didn't have to go all the way to Royal Beach, I stayed. And it's very disheartening to hear those comments because I have family and friends that do come out of town to see our beaches. So, um, please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Everybody for their comments this evening. Thanks for coming out. Uh, if you have a choice, you can stay for the entire meeting or if you have a long evening ahead you, feel free to to go home. It's your choice. We do understand. And, uh, at this time, I ask for approval of the minutes of the February sixteenth, Councilman.
Um, first of all, the references to the Oh, my name is Laura Blastbauer. I live at three two five six Cherokee Court in Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. So, um, just in reference to some of the comments that have been made tonight, um, I agree that the phrase them people did on sound. Good as it about that as well. Yeah. When I when I heard it, it didn't sound good, but you can sit at the doubt, Mr. Mayor, because you did have a follow on saying that, um, that the beach for residents, because it's a small beach, it's a fragile beach, and having an influx of visitors would be detrimental to that beach. So I like the way that phrase being out. I you know, I'd like to extend the benefit of the doubt that you left nothing wrong that's worrying by it about saying certainly for those people other than a large amount of visitors. Um, here to talk about them. Um, and my second comment is, um, the document should really be making you on a policy perspective because a lot of not as well. Everybody's got this feeling. Yes. And so when I came to say that, um, that there's information on the agenda package describing HOA versus town responsibilities regarding property. The town is the grantee of the Feds covenant with explicit power for the town to enforce it written into the covenant. It would be nice if one of you would ask the town attorney in a public meeting so that the public can understand how the town could assist in compelling the owner of the Feds parcel to convey the property to either the fill station HOA or the town of Chesapeake Beach because it isn't in any resident's best interest to allow the developers to that's it. Here to express my profound disappointment that after choosing to raise density above what the planning commission recommended for the RV two area, elected leaders have now decided not to review or implement code governing design standards or compatibility standards for the high density housing that in long line allows private to lifting the more important. Leaders have not run everything they can do to protect small town charm. When code governing standards for multi-unit and townhouse development passed by the planning commission and code governing compatibility standards passed by the planning commission and translated to elected leaders in February remain unreviewed. I raise density above planning commission recommendations and forego implementing standards for high density development will not protect small town charm. And instead have preserved the ability of special address. And continues to move forward with large housing projects that a majority of residents feel will be incompatible and too intense for the areas in which they were concerned. These projects will impact mobility and will cause tax hours, which is hard to use in France, to be diverted from other areas of town. Leaders reluctantly allow them to thoroughly raise that to nature accommodating project and are now unwilling to clarify requirements that would compel developers to improve lawability infrastructure and other sustainable features to the project in stemming. I plan the Chesapeake Beach will be reviewed against the new standard and the code. Please review and excuse me. To lifting the more important and work as a town planner to ensure that additional provisions are added where necessary, such as for commercial projects, certified projects, and projects within the fourth zone to avoid developments that will negatively impact the town.
Three oh nine two Foreign Court. I'm a resident of Chesapeake Village. I'm elected board member, the HOA board director of Chesapeake Village. I'm here speaking on behalf of the HOA board. It's the board's position to maintain restrictions at Bayfront Park. Mostly because of parking and overcrowding. That before COVID, the entire lot was sold. Parking was our neighborhood. Uh, there's no parking signs at the entrance and people would park on the grounds, damaging the grounds that we pay a contractor maintain and repair. So you actually adhere to the signs that says no parking, but they move on into the into the neighborhood parking on the streets and then the call to sadness. And then, well, we've already asked the party. Chesapeake Village and along our streets. To talking to, uh, residents standing around at the bus
Thank you. I can take your time to comment, sir. For the minutes of the March seventh informational work session. We had the, uh, we have the special presentation in twenty twenty two.
Thank you of time at Chesapeake Beach, state of the town address. I am the town administrator Holly Ball. This year, the state of the town is available in multiple formats. The full state of town address can be found on our town website as well as gaining QR code on the lower portion of the screen. I'm here for mayor. I have this introduction message to the state of the town.
Today, to me, we need this war for earth, in the east, we must preserve small town values. This reason I should serve small town values. In my second term as mayor, working alongside the council also during their second term, we have collectively a sense of community, but this is not by chance. Here is differently by each of us, the sense of our community is strong thanks to our residents. Our values can be seen in September 2022 evening. This is who directed first responders to a first aid room in the health and earth that is a important source of social connection, but almost a purchase a sense of I recognize that's my great responsibility in contributing to the sense of responding to towns there. Adequate coverage by law improvements critical infrastructure. Continue to be positioned well to provide some foundation needed to conserve small-town values and look forward to serving to great citizens in Chesapeake Beach.
Financial outlook of the town, property taxes have decreased during this administration six years in a row. The total tax reduction has amounted to over half a million for town citizens. This administration has also focused on population. Studies reduced by over $1,000,000 over the last six years. And that position of the town has continued to increase by 4.1 billion in 2022 and the net fee liabilities by 47.49 million. Financial news, the mayor of Town Council appointed a new town treasurer in 2022. Brittany Murray was unanimously appointed as the town treasurer in the town of Lash-Dominant. Brittany is a suicide public accountant and has experience serving in local government, federal government, as well as private auditing centers. Please say hello to Brittany if you see her and welcome her to Chesapeake Beach. The mayor of Town Council continue to carry out citizens' desire to limit gambling activity in town. After 80% of citizens voted against expanded gambling in a 2020 ballot question, the town considers continues to offset costs through grants, receiving approximately over a million in grants in 2022 and was awarded an additional 30,000 in grant funds. The town has 65 public meetings with over 4,000 in each year as well as public works resolving over 90 years towards its public work partners.
Hello everyone, this is Jay Barry, Public Works Director here at Chesapeake Beach. At Public Works, we structure a key holder infrastructure maintain, often running, and at the same time focus on installation, proper installation, and the first step of all, building. We still want to maintain over 50 model water reservoirs, three water towers, 13 sewer pump stations, one swimming water pump station. To keep all these facilities up and running when the power grid is nailed, we also maintain 17 generators and four back front pumps. The town is in great shape, and we strongly move forward with continuing infrastructure investment to keep it that way. Some of the improvements this year include the cleaning of the road trails group of many layers of paint, sand lines, and paint with a two-part intensity to give it a longer life than previous paint. We'll continue to add some other upgrades needed at the park. We have upgraded more than for the street line, it's all 260, 2601, seeing 31st Street, Chesapeake Village, Paul Ball, it's empty on its this led to a 50% reduction in energy uses last year, and it's only 100% of Public Works changing home over 160 lights. Building was changed as a 40-plus-year-old building. Once we got the potential, some something came before. We went for a some hopeless upgrades and some ability and created new offices. We also completed decking wall. The 2614 walls across the road. We also replaced the decking panel for Eastern Seater Doors with and the same. And today is kind of sure that there's some change just from here to continue obviously being prepared and ensure that you're fitting these and that so we can turn over any situation I stand standing, they were making super tight. I'm exposed to the conditions active. They see an area of I said, but even didn't achieve a over performance, we need to remove for this to only motivation of things in we started maintenance work Let me tell you on your service. Assistant see assistant if it was to retalize the the assistant. We this year for even if you have and the okay
The town looks closely with blockable community advisory group under the leadership of Councilman Stink and Councilwoman Hart. To improve blockability and safely from the town streets across town, the group is actively engaged in developing and partnering to rescue staff while utilizing three parks were designed by the committee. The northern West Pointe Kelly Field, a basel overlook on the public property south of Bay Harbor. In a basel overlook on Peachtree, the town received $150,000 in state funding for these projects through the support of the county commissioners. In addition, the town has made progress on the Route 261, basel side safe walking path that is supposed to run north-south on Maryland 261 on the east side. A feasibility study and a 30% design was completed in 2022, and the town plans to use this initial design to repackage on these projects. Engagement sessions where citizens provided input on their desires for both the taste and the dedicated space for children to play. This was incorporated into a development plan to renovate the Lower Level and Parky Collins Field to include new equipment, lower space. It's fully aligned to the enforcement responsibilities in 2022, integrating enforcement with public works. With fully aligned, Dennis Miller from the public works team was promoted to enforcement officer. They're three of them, a drawer awareness in the field of culture lions issues, with public work staff being fully integrated and primarily spending most of their time every day in the town. The resiliency code is continues to be implemented through town staff to ensure compliance and the asset property is owned in the right town. A town's police, that was permitted in 2022 and now for main hall rental permits in addition to general zoning permits in town. Through the state of Maryland grant funding, the town has made some progress on a postal residency plan that included forming a senior community of citizens and local businesses and public authorities. A path for the town staff, Council Vice President Larry Jomarski, and the experts in postal resiliency helps public meetings directly engage citizens and create a postal resiliency dashboard for citizens to track that. The town has also utilized a school through the environmental protection agency that allows the town to analyze risks to infrastructure due to flooding. The town focused efforts on the water reclamation treatment plant and its impact from flooding, not only from the town, but also our neighbor jurisdictions that convey sewer to the treatment plant. That includes Analyze the Paly, Power Paly, and the Town of North Beach. The town issued 127 zoning permits, adopted the 2040 comprehensive content, adopted the comprehensive zoning and priority test amendment. Town Planning and Zoning Commission also initiated review of standards for new development, which is planned to be reported to Town Council. The town's planning commission and council effectively preserve approximately 300 acres within the resource conservation district. The force of coverage remains the past priorities of the town, with two additional deputies added to the Town of Chesapeake Beach coverage in addition to the seven deputies split, 65% to the Town of Chesapeake Beach and 35% to the Town of North Beach. These additional resources have resulted in increased self-initiated controlling of the 23% over last year. In addition, the trendy studies have been performed by sites and golf cart patrol of town walkways and parks, including the Chesapeake Bridge from Lakeview. Leadership of Council Vice President Larry Jomarski and Councilwoman Norris, the North Beach to promote businesses. Business planning of sea carts for town events, hosted a holiday light bus tour, and increased promotion of businesses on the town left side. The Fish and Creek Channel is a vital component to the component of mentality of the town and the state. Dredging the Fish and Creek Channel was completed in 2022 to continue to provide open access to over 6,000 recreational roads in year and and travel places. Would be 2020 when you get your location, the president and the town stretch with your business site. Tiki Wall work completed some in the channel soon. We are positioned well for continued The joining and Jettie Wall project is serviced through the EJF Army Corps of Engineers, and the Town of Chesapeake Beach has provided logistics support through the Josh material placement site, and the state of Maryland continues to serve a key part of the town in maintaining the channel. The town is also happy to report that the town's public grants are now free to state of Maryland residents and unanimously voted by the town council, which promises further business businesses. The annual Taste of the Beaches was a group success in 2022, attracting over 2,000 guests to the center of town. You will miss out on this Taste of the Beaches in 2023. Also due to the town's economic mentality, we will never hear of some literature. Hi, ladies and been a great manager for the Town of Chesapeake Beach. Needed to be enhanced safety thanks to the painting being to return to the I saw it. See talking any issue being serious basis of including safety Chesapeake of Chesapeake Beach a decision to start that make the chief Make sure you take a moment and attention off what the town beach so we are raising this condition and to engage the community and sample residents and maybe see any requests for meaningful assistance and support. I mean, we'll use the House of the commission mission to raise awareness of specifically confused or something. Remove the shame on town crisis so people can seek help with some of the community and given people need and have civilians available for mention, free delivery, and support these The coalition's foundation is sponsored by the local agents of citizens to the community of town. To include general check of wellness, moving along with safety, child safety advice, the coalition promotes that was disturbing in public works, which is kind of and how the The Green Team is under new leadership of Councilman O'Leary, and the Green Team is busy designing the new lines, seating pollinators, increasing engagement plans, and educating residents on how to deal with the basin. The team has planned to cleanup the land and water through the town's way of her. Stay tuned for more volunteer help of the Green Team. feedback continues to make its models carrying out deliberations while establishing plans for the community and is well-integrated, speaking to the Green Team and continues to support public schools through outreach efforts to learn about health of our bay, how to test for water quality, and how to build repackaged protecting our waters so they can continue to do their job and keep our waters clean. Thank you for speaking with us. There's some exciting things happening in Chesapeake Beach. There are many ways to engage in 2023. Please engage with the town as we finalize plans for open space at the Collins Field. You can engage in the conversation of postal resiliency. We'll have many more public outreach sessions coming up in 2023. Follow us as we work with the states and some of the finished 100% of the building states of Beach, our mentor, Chatham Village, and along Bay Harbor. Join the community at one of our mini-town events. Stay tuned to hear how you can take that great crap and some inclusion on the Christmas tree at town hall. We're looking for town businesses, residents, and local organizations to make some mark on the report, we received a lot of questions about responsibility between HOA and the town. And so I provided some information and I will be sending this to all of our H. raise a responsible board versus the town. Speaker, we were planning for sixty thousand cubic yards, I think was the high number, but there's the potential to. wall work, so they're going to do another survey. And if there's any more material in the channel, they will do another dredge and then deposit more material. Take the twenty-seven thousand cubic yards within the range of what we thought. And what did you give me? Would you second the dredge, the survey? I have not put the time frame, but the survey would be done after the jetty wall is complete. From the jetty wall work, there will be another survey in my next meeting, so thank you very much.
I know when the first came through, we brought doors to our town hall. It was first day to towns working together with our pledge with HOA there. And through those initial years, I'm. Speaking. I think the county had been pretty clear through the. Their responsibilities over. And I'm going to suppose many of the questions that you received from H. are the same questions that we brought, five, six, four. Some of that stuff. I know we had some discussions about some of the water sewer responsibilities of the town underneath private asphalt. discuss code, find some of that stuff to help eliminate some of those questions. Wasn't very fair with the HOAs. They gave same property tax rates. Station where we have quite a diversity of single family homes to standard condominiums, and they all get the same property tax rate. We appreciate you. Ways and residents that count deserve to have to the service before and why it's for posterity. It's about Calhoun Field. I know that. Something around. And state departments are understaffed. I don't think it's acceptable for. This vacant store drain that we've been waiting on for quite a while with. It's my understanding that the stain is actually. This part, they're saying it gives Calhoun County now that needs to. Where are we with Calhoun?
Yeah, so our engineer and town attorney at the county, and we are in the process of an M.O. that the town will take responsibility of maintenance of the wiring for the town. And so we have that in the works, and I think as soon as that's executed, we should be close to moving forward.
That's correct. State is actually at this point ready to issue the permit over a rule in Calhoun County. State, I'll keep this comment really short. I think it was at the last council meeting, I had some comments about the postal resiliency, and I felt that resiliency was the perfect word for that, what that group of individuals were attempting to achieve. And my comments were. State, there, we've got many. Communities in Maryland. Resiliency changes. In order to. Slay plants, nothing but a plant when they get up to a state level, when they sit on the shelf. So we should contact our state. Zandvoers to help make those permits a priority for those communities because. Again, it's a perfect word for that with. Councilman Jaworski was leaving that right there. In a community on a bay that's trying to implement protective measures. See, I will rise and crush the storms. Thank you. The general public, since I've been asked, over the last week. All from people that were reporting, focusing out there, those were those big white orange balls that are out there to tie the orange up too. So they are making progress. Thank you. No questions, but two quick comments. Just following up with council member Morris said about these two ways. I think there's now, particularly. I was asking the other day, I was just like, wow, that actually is public property. I had no idea. There's, I think, some questions here between, we as a. Well, I also want Councilor Morris saying, it's interesting to me that we're eighteen months out from the conceptualization of the dream, you know, the day we. So the point being that, and this stuff moves slow, so it's us up here that are causing us some discomfort. Thanks.
So Greg, I wrote that kind of private just probably, you know, like that idea whenever there is a decision made in regards to the state of HOAs, it's almost as documented and you're thinking, you sound absolutely true. So some frustrations for the decisions that were made and why. And maybe some of the angst that we had in the past could be afforded in there, which I think is really solid. It's a good idea. Also, on the private parts, once again, we've heard us to use native language and providing feedback, which let us know we are there to serve, but we still plan the offset. Easy, very easy. And regarding the jetty, I know we don't have a status, but do we have an accident because I'm a little concerned about the rockfish taking starts and making sure that folks can get in and out of their safeties or anything that would be key. Turnboat captains or other boats going in and out during the construction of the jetty, if it is, that's a problem.
It's not me.
As well, I'm careful. Yeah, I mean, because obviously we wouldn't want to, you know, bond with the people who can be avoided. Could the boat go in and out today or tomorrow as it's a circle? Could the boat launch it? Third time?
Yes, there's no.
I understand. There's nothing in the.
Assess that every time. So it's, it might be down to one lane at times, but there's no plan, which is a matter of them yesterday. I think it's going to be the time, it's going to be right before rockfish season, we're permitting, we'll follow up.
If there's nothing that's impeding boat traffic, so they can take their time and do a really good job. And kind of reflections.
Thank you.
For we read Fox's report, if we do any questions of Fox, I'll. See if I can. Nothing for me, thank you. No questions. No questions.
I'm just not letting you know, great, thank you.
Okay. First, we read Jay's report. Do you have any questions?
We're watering town, located on top of our regional station water tower. Ten in a truck, which takes about a day really to drive a town because you get the stresses and drive it. We're vibrating to have the entire town red. Getting a bucket from here to town hall on that tower, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Pretty efficient, thank you.
Sure. Steel under the rock cane area has been replaced. What's needed is done, and we're looking at the entire thing comprehensively as we go forward.
And.
It's completed, it's done before the war punch, but a comprehensive plan will not be done. I think that would be looked at during the season this year and maybe enacted next year.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Sure.
Right there. I know that, I remember that there's people here tonight, I know that some of the guys on the side of the council, I know there was some prepared meeting, year one, I was here about six years ago in there. I know that we talked into replacing that whole structure, and it was also enormous. I'm suspecting that our decision to. Steel and the cover to protect is the right decision. What does the, Jay wants the ETA on, I mean, it's weather's pattern, but ETA on that logo.
That's a good question. The common tractor that performed the water and the town park is supposed to come back and set up to do that. We're kind of, we have a plan for him to do that, but we're having some problems getting him back on site to perform that work. So we might actually reach out to someone else with the money so they haven't given ourselves.
That's the value of it. Headboard, thank you. No questions for Jay, just for the record, delighted to note that new clock two sixty is not only installed, but it is now showing the correct time more than twice a day. Is the clock still on the record for today? A ton of new rain holes to, did we, was there something that happened there or is that just general maintenance?
It's general maintenance, it's seasonal, so when the weather gets better, we're not there often. And there are times where unfortunately. Go loose and kind of uses that as to probably run the next round or two. So if you see a section that's.
It's locked one place, but that explains why. So it wasn't a weather, which is good. That's a, that's.
The water chair, yesterday I noticed at the entrance to St. Andrews Park, there's some bricks, you know, we saw the bricks right there in the entrance way, there's bricks missing, and there's others that are loose, and I don't have any more than this one, so before they get any, you know.
Correct. And that's in my report, the state and town, that's one of the things we're looking at now. There's the last two original benches that are closest to the road where the other ones were replaced with metal benches. So we're going to leave this summer structure under there, but we're looking at now some alternatives to cover up those two benches and kind of fix it partly because we face those bricks. I'm going to say enough time, we're going to look at all kinds of ways to cover that concrete.
Just on my preference, with the bricks there still, because I think it adds aesthetic definition, energy, and enter the park there. Then if we just did the same kind of edges to that park, even the remainder of the park, I don't think we'd have that sort of definition. And so I'm just in support of the bricks in some manner. And so I hope it's not just done, some other materials without, you know, easy discussion about it, because I do think that's a nice definition.
Sure.
Thanks, that's it. Hey, Jack, just a really quick one. Is the second page mentioned Linda Gold and Golden Associate?
Yes.
Yeah, and you mentioned the big department for review of recommendations. It's important to be in an unconnected relationship. It seems to be good that we're getting that sort of recommendations to them from now on.
Mr. Gold has provided technical assistance through various, our, from various training over the years. He doesn't work throughout the morning, he's kind of on our own road. And I've worked with a couple times, somebody who reached out to get the questions, he has a rough knowledge. There will be somebody who. To have a green light for constitution.
The pressure, the, 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 that company, we call the name.
Um, I certainly consider that from prospect, I might have a sort of, it's a, it should agree, basically, for her, if you.
So, I think it's really good to have that expert, expertise come in from outside, since you're only going to be in the efficiency, so that's, it's good.
Only see Lenny and Larry, who are happy and last. Should I just kind of say, make sense, see him say hi?
We're operating on a high level over there, and it's not just to benefit our town, but to benefit. There, uh, code enforcement report, we read Jen's report.
Sorry, is the rental registration a one-time fee, or is that annual?
It is a.
You have to reapply urban to like this.
Thank you.
No questions?
What is the product license fee, just like?
Uh, they could cover our third party inspector, that we hire for each of the units, and then we have a, a show, stuff that's scheduled in, in terms of, you know, our scheduling. Well, I know the idea.
Now, we should include rental apartments, I just, uh, zoning apartments as well, um, I have to mention that I've got some pushback for some folks who are A M S Bs, uh, and like. Say this every few months or so, somebody once told me that, uh, code enforcement was a headache for, for, for. No questions, thank you, Dennis, one more, no questions, thanks. Very much, sir. Uh, we don't have a schedule, a report as well, they're pretty decent budgets now, and I mean the, uh, county attorney's report, uh.
The insurance department, they have some, uh.
Since there's folks with, can you give us a quick update on?
Unfortunately, we're going to the state to get, how to ask to issue the rest of the receipt from the RFP, the grant, so.
Thank you.
Just, uh, addition to the two sixty-one accessory impact, uh, a year ago, we met with state highway out there, when we experienced that flooding at the end of October, and they were undertaking a study to evaluate options, so I've now followed up with the twice asking for progress, it worked, and heard nothing back, so I'll, I'll keep after.
Station under the town, has been working over here, helping out, how they can, uh, with his issues there in Richfield. The residents of Richfield Station for quite a while, that the developers need to get out of that unfinished. It's, uh, to do everything that, that is reasonable, um, and within their purview that's there, that's, that's what we're. A bush in that law, just we've been waiting a long time up there for that. Been moving, it looks like we're moving along there, so that's a, a V E A there, uh, I suppose. Maybe, uh, just echo with this, the, the. Say a little bit, it's not the bashin' thing, but there's two sixty-one sidewalks though. Um, now all these consider, from what I've seen and observed, and been part of, is not everything they can to get that. Well, I don't want to say it's in Leno, um, I want, um, it's obviously moving forward because, you know, we've got this design, uh, the design is going out now for bid, um, but, uh, the sober reality of that is that, uh, all likelihood, a shoulder won't break ground on that project, but the next council is likely to, so, uh.
But we had talked about some time ago, where the state had come in and said what they would do for the blocks, to enhance the mid building across blocks, and thinking about this now, because they have some, we have some, we have some car mobility center, um, they had talked about repaintings and other ways to do that, um, maybe if it's after the state, it would take how many, just a brush now?
Graphic study, and the then those intersections. People, if you want to come on, they would, thank you. Okay.
And these reports, we have questions for this report, uh, before I have, have any questions, that's, which, and the, the, you have, I'd like, you have any words of advice for any, uh, potential state patron today, uh, or. Okay, I'm proud. I'm sure you, you want to be out there.
Yes, very happy to have a couple of people come out with, uh, for the weekend.
Very well, thank you, that's great, thank you.
Any questions, just an observation, it's kind of light, just kind of a good sign, sign of the safe time, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, okay, uh, we read, and we're being called to your fire department. Uh, do you have any questions?
Yeah, our, our report wanted, uh, the folks that are in our force, that, uh, police service. Wanted to share everyone is that we have started planning for the one hundredth anniversary of the fire department, which will occur, which actually was incorporated August fourth of nineteen twenty-six, so it will be twenty twenty-six, that we have some kind of, that we, uh, recognize at the one hundredth year.
Temperature night, and our deputies will be open to call to ensure our safety. Next, staying in the St. Patrick's spirit, I have some words of praise for our council staff and citizens. Under this administration, the county council has reduced the general real estate cost by over half a million dollars. Hours, cash money, as they say, in people's pockets. This year alone, by reducing the town taxes for the seventh straight year, we are giving a hundred seventy-three thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars back to our residents. Administration, the county council has reduced town debt by over seven million dollars. Want to thank each one of them, as well as the town staff for all their preparation. They make our jobs easier. Want to recognize all the good people that set me free, who thanked me. All towns with a way of life and being transparent by coming home and informing them exactly what films are out there, and which ones I am opposing or supporting in their interest. Ending up, this special interview does come with a price, and I will put your bills on the floor of that. It is the honor of a lifetime to be your member who says, "Now I watch." Thank you. Resolutions that were exist, we. Folks want ordinance O dash twenty-three dash four, and ordinance the county council. Three K, and twenty-five dash thirty-three L, and twenty-five dash thirty-four A. Yeah.
We are just a bit, a quick debuff, before you vote, do you have something you want to add to the before, but that's fine, go ahead.
Oh, yes, for, for, yeah, just thought that with your, the folks here tonight, and they weren't here, I just wanted to address. We have all, some of our comments, the R, all process, contact. Uh, uh, thank you, uh. Second one is the cleanup ordinance, uh, the first one, which is the A, which is one of the ones, I caught a lot of people out here this evening. Uh, cleanup ordinances, if you will, work the major tax amendments that have been passed recently for the, uh, this, uh. As many of you there, anyone, I know that was a super long journey, uh, you know, these tax amendments were provided, the, the tax amendments, uh, A under A this evening were. For those, uh, the larger ordinance that we passed, uh, recently, uh. See, we have, you know, the original tax amendments, was cleanup ordinance, were a result of intense court engagement, uh, first, uh, it took too long, uh, these things aren't easy, uh. Stand with a statement, uh, that may be forward, there's a lot of development opportunity here in town, uh, just that the, uh, part of that is it's hard to strike a balance, uh, but, um, I feel. Us there, between what residents want here in town, and what development, this owners need here in town. At the end, that just to kind of sum that up, uh, what is, what gets built will be a testament to all of that work, and spend a lot of work, uh, so my idea is supporting vote for visible, just thank you. Very well, okay, um, and next one, we'll, 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 we'll ordinate Z O dash car three dash two, as, as. To address code numbering and formatting, made necessary by certain tax amendments and work. That ordinance, their votes, go for, go for, second. Second, okay, all in favor, aye, aye, any ayes, uh, next, vote on ordinance O dash twenty-three S three, ordinance of the county council. Which has been reached for the fiscal year July one of twenty-one, June thirty, uh, twenty twenty.
Seven hundred.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, it's for, when we talk about reconciling expenses and, uh, what it is, is that your casa budget, they said, uh, best, if they ever, and with the balance that we have, sometimes there's certain lineups that go over, and since the budget is an ordinance, um, what, what we need just need to reconcile the differences, so we have a work section to discuss any of this whole version, um, so that we have a properly balanced budget, control of secret practices, that's exactly what that, that is for, it's for various years, election, which just give you a, for instance.
Or, the ordinance of county council, which has been reached, I think the annual budget for. And ratify over its benefits, on some. Second, all in favor, aye, aye, any ayes, uh, next, vote on ordinance O dash twenty-three L five, and ordinance of the county council, which has been reached, I think. Fiscal year, a lot of work, July one to June thirty of twenty.
Is this?
Next, all in favor, any ayes, uh, next, vote on ordinance. Twenty-three, June thirty, twenty-four. All three. When, ordinance O dash twenty-three S seven, and ordinance of county council. Three, June thirty of twenty-four, go to approve, next.
When we discussed this, there was still a discussion as to whether that was approved by our partners, Southern and Leno, Calvert, and Orkney, just as a fair assumption that they've agreed to, uh, the budget. that they've agreed to go budget, take it.
Okay. All in favor, she can go ahead and say it now? ... year July 1st, 23, June 30th, 24, and setting municipal tax rates.
No, two.
Set forth an exhibit A, our people might adopt. $0.2977 per $100 assessed valuation is hereby adopted. All in favor? Aye, aye. Any ayes? Of the town Chester Beach, the fiscal year July 1st, 23,... ... related to water and sewer service by the town. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if you can... Your button, please, you put your, oh, I'm sorry. Given, given, 23 dash nine, given, yes, yeah. Here is that, okay, here is the ordinance, says O dash 23 dash nine. Correct, Larry? Chester Beach adopting the annual budget for the water park. More, uh, I will set the... April 11th at 5:30. Hope these discussions will be dealt with. Introduce ordinance O dash 23 S ten, ordinance to the town council, Chester... Four, set your rate structure, related to water and sewer services by the town, set up a public hearing for Tuesday, April 11th. Dash, 23 dash 1. The residents... Beach Maryland, two police vehicles parked, our guests, uh, residents, two guests, uh, and town residents, and our guests, uh, Calvert County sheriffs. Wait for last three summers that is not to do, if their votes go through.
No, two through.
There's that. I'll second that.
Yeah, I mean, I do understand the concern of, um, those individuals that do not live in town, not being able to access privacy, free from work, but I also, especially as a green member, your standards fragile and fragile and sensitive nature, and the fact that the matter itself consists of, does not have to be passionate to really have, you might guess, that did that, and I remember when we first, um, started doing that, of course, going a decade ago, um, we had some folks who walked down the side of the road on 261, there, across the Chester Beach Village, and that Chester Beach Village was being developed, and there was one, some, someone was going to build, they should be a park on the side, and she says, "Why, yes, they were." And then once the asphalt did get there, um, they were talking down on Chester Beach Boulevard, and it just wasn't safe, nor am I really supportive of increasing the size of the parking lot there, um, more asphalt's not the, you know, not the ideal solution, increasing the, uh, asphalt, the size of it. So knowing that it's a small capacity park, knowing you're fragile, you're... Now, any Chester Beach residents, by as many people as they want, as long as they're present, um, you know, with, with their Chester Beach drivers, like, or any other type of identification, north of the Hudson Straits, that you have in the South Times, it is fragile, is a possible solution to unfortunate situation as this person cannot handle the amount of traffic and the amount of usage that could...
Thank you. Or I don't think anything that I can say that is better than what I... Suspect that we will revisit it, uh, I suspect, thank you.
So...
I just wanted to, uh, share the same concerns I hear during our work session and listening See, we had a prior discussion at the last work session, uh, these particular type of policies in particular should come up for review and discussion at certain intervals. That's just good work, that's to take a look at collectively with this body here, uh, in public, uh, have a discussion about, uh, maybe we should increase something there, or why we shouldn't leave controls the way they are, um, it's good work, uh, they shouldn't be revisited. Uh, I'm in support, uh, of the ordinance that you have here. Concern, this body does not look to restrict people from coming into, uh, single out anyone coming into town. It's all of my, the conversations that I have been involved with, always been about what's best for the residents here in town. Now, that, uh, the businesses have some ancillary enclosures, uh, I've had several folks approach me who are in the 20732 code that are, they're outside of Calvert, they're not allowed to come here. You know, that, that's, uh, I'm open to discuss... ... before, maybe last year, uh, you know, how can we provide a little... Benefit enjoyment of our residents here, and that's, that's the main, uh, objective with that, uh, with that, uh, support. Thank you. Sure? Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just want to echo, um, comments by Councilman Dean and, and Councilman Morris. Hardly any restaurants there, trash everywhere. I mean, it's just not sustainable to have that kind of odd season after each, and so... Doing that either, they've wanted, they've, and especially after the experience over the last two, three years where it's been restricted, they've really enjoyed being able So, just like, also echo that, um, you know, this is a, this is a resolution, and it can't be revisited pretty easily in the future if things aren't working out, so that...
...... ago, here now on the ground. So that is really a dangerous situation that we do have to take there, and tell people don't cross it, but, you know, people... Or certainly citizens, anyone who's there, um, they don't wait until the end of the day they collapse, they can do it. So, two years, we will look at the resolution again, we will reevaluate how the beach is But they really are, are quite...
Yeah. Resolution to the town council, Chester Beach, Maryland, ending, terminating the moratorium regarding development. Seven hundred and...
Seven. Second, what's the question?
Two seconds, okay. And I'll be getting, I'll, I'll, I'll be getting... Councilor, vote on that?
Yeah, um, this is going to go ahead and down, kind of like for the, I mean, the question that I asked at the, uh, work session, a lot of times, Councilor, you mentioned it was, regarding when implementation of the ordinance will occur. So regarding this resolution, this is my question, I actually wrote it down, if I got it right. Now, I'll just say this, this has been a process, the county has a, uh, minimums to section 290, and, um, it continues with compatibility standards, so this is my question. Referencing the Plan of Zoning Report that we got out of Hackett, section 233, fundings of compatibility, if the moratorium is lifted prior to review and vote on this section 290 to 23, effective of Plan of Zoning, will any projects be under this new sections provisions if and when they are voted upon by council? Is there a risk that the package or plan appears tomorrow that they will not, meaning the findings of compatibility, was they are duly discussed and voted upon by town council? Will they be effective or not?
Basically, the projects will be reviewed of the new schedules.
Even though they have not been discussed, not voted upon, but they have been, the office council has input package. Okay. No time on it, so it's all just me and Jim Court, whatever that might mean, review the pre, uh, the called the findings and compatibility, so that much time they spend on this, this, the council, the top plan, the amendments, and now this compatibility standards. I want to ensure that any development that does occur is under that, those auspices of what they've worked out and could pay.
Right.
Okay, we will.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? All right. Okay, uh, we have motion, yeah, we have second, all in favor, say aye, aye. And you have ayes. February 27th, received input on the cultural res residency plan, it could turn off the discussion at that meeting, uh, work is proceeding and moving forward. For updates on dashboard, uh, for that plan. Also participated in another virtual meeting on February 24th to continue discussion of ... along with towns in Cambridge and Chrisfield, and group is working on scheduling the next meetings of this group, hopefully at mayorship, date to be determined. Speaking, Maryland Economic Development Day in Annapolis on February 21st. This is all, but, uh, several members of, uh, the new elected staff, legislative officer, chief of staff, uh, chair of the... Talking about issues that they want to address during their terms. Another note, the Trevor County Economic Development Advisory Commission, our regular Relationship with the New York Cancer Institute, and they are really moving forward on, uh, available medical care at that facility. Office of Assistance Grants, which county received 134 mills, every nine of them were funded, uh, works proceed... Sometime this summer. And then the also posted a video discussing economic development in the county to be reviewed. Anybody who's still going to the movies and shows at the Prince Frederick Blackshires Cinema Theater, but it's also available on the YouTube video on the county economic development website. Got your... Been an excellent representative for our economic development, maybe I'm sure he's felt like he's been a one man show for the past couple of years, maybe. Uh, I know you're involved in a lot of things, Larry, you're, uh, the county's economic development committee, so don't ask me for any help on that level, but I am, I'm looking for that with a fair review and a thought about, uh, what you're learning there at that level that we can share.
Sure, just quickly, um, first of all, our next meeting is Wednesday, March 22nd, that's Wednesday, not Thursday, and Wednesday, March 22nd, at 6:30 here at Annapolis, and I wanted to mention, and thank everyone involved, the basis fishing stock that we had at the North East Community Center, this was in collaboration, cooperation with the Southern Park Center, and we had about thirty five, forty people there, I want to thank Sue, who was our MC, and Melanie, who we introduced Sue, it was a nice, wonderful, uh, really, uh, filmed while attended, so there were also two books that we drafted off on the basis, it was, it was a nice event. Uh, great, uh, just a little bit earlier because there was some competing, and why are there, um, opportunities or different effects that were occurring, so there was some competition, so we're thinking of having February, September, March next year, uh, due to that reason. Uh, next event is, um, it correlates with, uh, birthday, it's going to be the time, you know, April 22nd, you know, we have children up every year, unfortunately, litter does get about, we try to figure it out, uh, both in the spring and in the fall, and so this one is not, uh, kind of, typically pick up, which, uh, all of it, this one will be a time cleanup, and, uh, maybe it comes up, the, uh, the, um... ... um, December 12th, and so we really will check you on there, uh, what we're doing this time is we're gonna... Uh, what we're doing this time is we're going to come around the kindergarten age, they have been touched with the two of the scout troops. We have so many places for them to go if they're adults. Long. Near the marsh, um, that's where the fire hall, we got that way, um, trying to spread out, um, it's only based on parts, it's been pretty good with the, um, litter cleanup, so there really still needs to go along there. If you actually go along the roundway, that's pretty good too unless you get down in the marsh. So, uh, we're going to spread that weed as well, we're going to move out, so we provide everything you might need from logs and dogs to grow up and so, how much, what is that? I don't know. March, or is it April 22nd? Um, that's a Saturday. Also, you may have made a notice, we're beginning to start it, so we're going to start, uh, well, our landscape, uh, two sixteen, two sixty one, and so that would be another good thing. The first time they did it, they did it by hand, can you imagine doing curb sweeping by hand? Oh my gosh, I can't. But they did it, and, um, if you actually look at it, it looks pretty good now, and those little paths that are done a few times a year. Um, just in the landscape and that, in the reservation. Very much, Rachel?
Thank you. Uh, and, um, councilwoman. A very successful green team, uh, supporting the town. Also, I've always said that it's certainly appropriate for this town to have, to have one of the best green things around. Town update, uh, there's a lot of parts to this, uh, some, uh, they're a couple minutes here, it's, uh, way in port, maybe. There is, uh, one of the small, uh, playground upgrades, this up is out of bid, uh, as well as there's a part in part in the vicinity. There, uh, the town's there, uh, rained out, uh, lead visitors to the town, but also, uh, improved walkability for our residents here. Uh, we know that, uh, it's been a long time coming with this pipe, but it seems easy. So, yeah, uh, for today, uh, we are operating the, uh. County hall head chair had been working on U vision for. Need some things down there and make it more usable for, uh, our residents or our town visitors as well. And I'd like, uh, I know last time I asked you, last year, I might be a better comment for Holly here. Overbid. And that's my update there. Councilwoman, thank you again, please. And two things real quick, uh, you know, this. Say some of, some similar, uh, things, I don't want to be over. It's taking, you know, we, we've got plans, we want to put those plans in front of the public, and we've done that to some degree already, but we keep. Is it going to block it and is it going to destroy the wood that we put in? And we are. Are going to be. Saying, uh, we'd like to point out that the things that are under our control, uh, we've done a great job on. So we're going to have great new light soon, uh, and, and, you know, these. There is coalition. So our, our coalition met on February twenty third and to discuss primarily two projects that we are trying to undertake. One is a overdose awareness memorial sculpture. So we're in the process of submitting a development grants proposal to the. Program. So we're hoping to get some funding to do the planning for that project, and then if that's successful, then. Be doing a call for artists to submit proposals, and then that would, that would. Full scale, uh, sculpture by August thirty first of twenty twenty four, and that will be placed in the, uh, Mark, Mark Fraser Sunrise Garden in North. And we're pretty excited about that, just to raise awareness about this issue and support those, um, families who experienced a loss, as well as remember those who were lost. Uh, the other events would be just the planning for our, um, event on August thirty first that we've been doing at the, at the North Beach, North Beach Boardwalk. Started with, um, light up the town's purple, and that turned into a county event, and now it is a, it is a county event. Also, um, going to be reaching out to Bayside Baptist to see if. So that's kind of the highlights from our meetings, so back to.
Thank you, sure.
Uh, walkable community advisory group. Yeah, keep this short because we, uh, you know, we've been there a while. Uh, if you look at the state of the town, we have, uh, ample projects, we do expect to, uh. Present, uh, real work that, that, you know, we've been planning on for some time, again, things that are under our control. Basically, I, I think we want, uh. Respectful, uh, but we also want to use that to follow up with. Resilience with J D T. Project is eighty nine thousand one hundred dollars, brought to airport twenty three general fund capital improvement. Fair, private, and the ice habit.
Just curious about what this actually is. People about, uh, like you, term. Jake provided a, Jake, they are probably word expressed, it provided a very good explanation as to the top of what these sounds are in this stage, and why this is a unique use of our author fund, which is part of them. As I encourage, if you're putting what the woman is talking about, go back and listen to those pages, with the really grown, that's conversation, you know, it's quite fascinating and why this is a good expenditure. Thank you.
On our civil, this time, West Donovan, two thirty three five, call. Real Resort, along with my sister Mary, so. Sounds like to me you guys are having a lot of issues with the state and getting work done from, and. A year. I, I don't understand why you don't get them to help out. It's not a secret. Now has one, should put them to work. You don't think, I'm, I was somewhat disappointed in the way that they went tonight, uh. Back in the seat where Mayor, I know he is tonight, and one of the things he would always say is think locally, as Ranger. And, you know, with Bay Park Park, it's an asset to all of. So I commend you, Councilman, to worship on your vote of vote. I think there were other things that, that. To consider, like maybe limiting the number of people at the park? Or maybe, uh, I don't know, I just feel like there's an opportunity to miss tonight with that, and, uh, another opportunity to miss was. Still haven't heard an apology. Mayor and members of the town council, Bob Perfect, I live at forty twenty one Front Lane Road in Hudsonstown. To make, but before I get into those comments, Mr. Mayor, I believe. Bill of funds ordinance, you voted on the amendment and have the final ordinance, so I want to take care of that, okay? Been here for eight years, Pat, trying to keep me in line, though I'm still doing it. Um, I was a twenty year resident of Chesapeake Beach, eight years on this council, served as the president of the county committee chamber of Congress, so I know a little bit about economic development. And despite your statement to town report, what are you doing, what you have, are doing, and what you've done is not helping business. Resolution limiting access to Bayfront Park does not help business. The moratorium that's lifted tonight, when enacted, do not help business. The twenty twenty two general funding amendment tonight contains over one point. Twenty one percent of the total general fund budget comes from businesses operating in this. Thousand in hotel tax. Twenty twenty four budget that you approved tonight includes over one point eight million in admission and reasonable tax revenue. When the general funds transfer and federal grants are taken out of the budget you adopted tonight, twenty three percent of the general funds budget comes from businesses operating in this town. Add in another hundred thousand in hotel tax. When will you start working to help businesses in this town? Businesses that have allowed you, as you've noted several times, to cut property taxes year after year. Businesses may not have a voice, or excuse me, a home in this town, but they need to have a voice.
Oh, sir? Okay. They all in favor, say aye.
I want to remind you of the great meeting on March twenty second, on town piano, on Saturday, April twenty seventh, um, that's in the same day as our birthday. I want you to think about those two, uh, offices that were energy system, uh, we both need utility fund, one of them. This, uh, considered enterprise fund, so what that means is that they are meant to be, and rightfully so, self-sustaining. And so, but you say, oh, to be able to cover your own costs. So the water pump ought to be able to cover itself costs, and utility fund, our portion of return, but ought to be able to cover a big sum of costs. So as you review those two budgets, I want you to think about that, and how you would manage ensuring that they remain in the enterprise fund, as they rightfully should. And one of the things that I think is also rich, and it's the money we save, but paying off our debt early. As we established, we have no general fund debt, which is uncovered. That's amazing, and that's being really connected, but now even we need to have another goal, and that's pay off our utility fund, long-term debt, early. There's some rules about when we can pay it off early, and mainly, I think it's like twenty seven, uh, twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight. But if you see that interest day, people will tell you, oh, but it's slowly through status, it's good debt. I'm sorry, you're still paying out dollars, real cash, and until you pay out real cash, that's not good debt. And so, think about, you know, the fact that, I think where our goals ought to be to pay off our long-term debt in the utility fund as quick as possible, perhaps, or like mathly. But I have always, since I've been out of town for eighteen years, considered both of those funds to be enterprise funds, meaning that they ought to be self-sufficient, and that's going to create some harder choices and purpose when we come up. And, uh, I believe that the town administration, the town staff are doing their best in trying to give us a good solid budget and a good path forward. Look at those budgets without pressures and with an open mind, and see how you would continue to have them as a rightfully and ought to be enterprise funds, both of them. They've done a bang-up job, and it hasn't been easy. Look at them and see what you think, when you come back with other companies. Always remember, they ought to be rightfully enterprise funds. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You've been here a long time again, and, uh, trying to keep this brief. Um, it has been really great, I, really great to see these folks out here. I know, I know, uh, you know, we made some decisions and, and not everybody went away or something, and on the whole, you know, we've heard, I've heard from citizens, over and over and over. Or I hear it in any public outreach that we do, I hear it in moments where someone taps me on the shoulder, and, um, it's a balance, you know? Uh, people are still able to enjoy it. moments or somewhere, someone taps me on the shoulder. And, um, it's a balance, you know, people are still able to enjoy the number of resources in this town. It's the best choice for the citizens of this town. This is our folks who maintain it. Um, I could go on and on. I'm not going to do that. I'm just going to end. Uh, you know, we some hard work on the budgets, hard, hard budget. We went all through all the details accepted and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll S R and as, as we were saying, the, um, the last thing I'll say is is, uh, the St. Patrick's Day, I think we should consider turning, uh, vision three point Beach Town Hall, it's sponsored by Bayside History Museum. This Sunday, one thirty to two thirty period. Seeing everyone at Extravaganza April first, eleven o'clock to one o'clock. I'm going to reiterate, uh, I'm closing. Recently books. Um, anybody that's been coming to Town Hall for as long as some of us in this town, uh, we understand that some of the past administrations that played within nation. Um, I want to weigh this to honor that stuff. Some of it, uh, helped drive me to, uh, run six years ago. Uh, I do want to report to, uh, this administration for their, uh, pivoting towards these work sessions. Sessions are invaluable to us. Uh, this is, this is a place where we, I totally enjoy the need to get amongst this group things considered and kind of a roundabout, um, uh, something that Charlie had said, that we know that Town Hall staff worked very hard behind the scenes to put together, uh, sort together the facts, uh, and set the table for the council for the best recommendations. And, uh, there's a ton of decisions to make, uh, but they're made with the residents mainly in mind. Uh, in that small town, you know, there's a tough part in the balance here. Sometimes we have to put a plan together, march forward, and see where we can adjust things. Uh, so I think that faith, um, behind this team's work that this administration puts in. states that the mayor of the town council responsible for all matters pertaining to the town. Uh, we know that the council responsible for legislation and so forth. Uh, sessions where we're pipeling all these important matters in, uh, all of us here, almost of us look influences. We have different backgrounds and so we've got different, uh, sensibilities and focus about all of this stuff. And that brings a good slice of diversity, uh, when we're talking about representing people. This is, so, uh, I'm looking forward to such as you will do as Town Hall, as I mean, uh, and, uh, and it's, uh, you know, we're covering all matters pertaining to the town. Uh, I look forward to, uh, continuing, uh, service for town. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Um, so that I want to just mention about the Oakwood Abuse Coalition. One is our next meeting is in Arizona. Hope some of you can make it there. And, um, cause we're still looking for new members to help us out. Welcome. I, I know some of the folks in this room have been here, been to some of our meetings and we hope you come back. Just would like to thank you all for coming here tonight and, uh, voicing is very valuable for, for, for me, for with where, you know, your thoughts are with respect to what we're doing. So I'd really love to see more people coming in here and, and giving us their opinion. So we have a better idea of, you know, a better connection with the person that folks are participating in the process of government. And that would be great. So thanks again to me and, yeah, good night.
So I wanted to comment, see me on a statement that was made certainly. And we say when it came is that particular fee paid by the base of the town and that people who multiple families and businesses tend to use more water would be punished less because in order to have a balanced budget, if these that had to work for people for them. And it's the hundred dollars seems to seem to be the best balance for covering what has to be covered for huge burden on anybody who's more than a two-person household. And that definitely clear business. And that's one of the things to look at because it would be a much higher fee paying a higher rate for, um, for thousands of water, fifty thousand gallons of water, eighty thousand gallons of water. For their work to present the balance budgets this year, I really appreciated, um, our treasurer's summary statements at the beginning of each of the different budgets, where she highlighted what the changes were going to be. So that, you know, as we read the budgets before coming to the meeting, we've got about ten thousand questions. And these budget meetings last year went for hours. Uh, but this year, because we had the upfront discussion, our, these are why these things